Welcome folks to the Town of Southwick Select Board Meeting for October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. It is six P M. We are in the land use hearing room at Town Hall and also remotely via Zoom and on channel fifteen. This open meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording, please advise Russ Anderson. We will start with attendance around the table. Uh, who will be joining us shortly? Diane Gale.
Doug Mogul.
Russell.
Nadine Signani.
Ian Van La Pledge of the Beach.
That's like the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Richard Sanders, one nation, one.
Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Well, the spectators in the room, is there anyone with public comment today? I see none. Is there anyone online with public comment today? Everybody.
Everybody didn't.
Doesn't look like it. Okay. Then we would like to um invite Rich Bozak to come up and then talk to us a little bit about the Department of Public Works Director position. I'm sorry. Oh, there she goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so we just probably have a couple of questions. Have you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
Um, why don't you start with a little bit about yourself and?
I uh, I'm Rich Wells, I T P W Supervisor currently. Been with the department for twenty plus years now. I uh, I've worked my way up from the transfer station up through the ladder to supervisor currently. For last three and a half years I've been there and um, I oversee all the departments to a day to day operations. And just I run that.
Okay. You've been under what, two D P W directors in your time?
Uh, yeah, I'd say that. I mean, in the very beginning, I think Arch Valier was gone by then, I think in two thousand and four. But he was here when I was somewhere a little bit.
Okay, um.
Southwick's three.
Yeah, but I was trying to.
Say two point five.
Two point seven, right? And then I don't know how many D P W supervisors in the mean.
Yeah, a few, yeah.
Yeah, so um, I don't know. What have you learned coming up through the ranks from from these managers?
A little bit of everything. Um, how to interact with not only public, but your own employees. Um, working with everyone and then obviously getting a very good grasp on the infrastructure of our D P W. Water sewer drainage, all that. Um, learning all that, but learning fleet maintenance. And um, a lot of the, sorry, infrastructure, but also learning more of as it's come on. Um, not only just the planning, but the future, learning more about what it takes to continually keep everything moving and rolling. And um, budgeting and all that and running projects and understanding the, how they all come together and the very different entities you use to build these projects, so to speak. So, I mean, with all that for underneath of many other supervisors I've had. So it's pieces, little bits and pieces from everybody. You pick up things and um, put the picture together.
Questions?
What do you think's gonna be your biggest challenge?
Um, I believe some of the budgeting, understanding where it comes from, where it's gotta go and how it has to go. It just doesn't come out of the sky. It's gotta come out of certain places and everything like that, knowing which ones you can use and what you can't use. And uh, obviously timeframes too. You only have it for so much and you gotta make sure it's every dollar counts to each project. Or day to day, year to year operations side.
Because you're, sometimes with the highway stuff, bridges, your ears, your projects.
Yeah, exactly. And that's a planning side, getting grants and all that is just fund these things to hopefully keep moving forward.
Have you been involved in the scheduling of those projects under grants?
A little bit. Um, a lot of it's just knowing when they come through and then seeing where they are. A lot of the grant side stuff is done. I haven't been part of per se when it's outside, but just learning where they go and how they get there and like to just the big challenge would be like Grant Central and all that and understanding where everything is, how you get in there, how you can access it. Things along that nature.
As a portal.
Yeah, it's the, I can't wait to get into it and start really seeing where it all goes and having access to it.
I would imagine a calendar is going to be your best friend on that.
That or my end, I mean, there seems like enough time.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is the dates on those grants that are on there, unlike snow, which kind of just comes up.
Yeah, that's what I meant too. Winter, winter's here coming, so it's kinda like, oh boy.
Sure.
Try to fit everything in and still be able to obviously keep everything moving at the same time.
Are you able to multitask pretty well?
I think so. I've been doing it for quite a while, especially the whole three, four, to five departments, you know, between the engineering sewer solid waste.
Especially the last few weeks.
And the last six, yeah, five months, let's call it, four months, good month and a half to learning a lot more payable.
And you're still a five division.
Yeah, that's so funny. But I figure it's a perfect opportunity to grow. Um, just like I just wanna learn more and it's just, it's all there. So it's kinda like, why wouldn't I want to? So that's what my my objective was, is just keep going and get better for the town.
Once you have the, you would have the um, your assistant on the scene, what do you think your focus would be on most in the next like three to six months? Where would you focus?
Yes, I think.
If that person gets squared away, where would you think?
After the winter and all that, I think a lot of that will be that budgetary stuff to make sure that I'm caught up to that, knowing where, what we need as a D P W. Where we can go and then obviously seeing where the next projects will be. Want to know like that beta information, knowing all that and then knowing where I'm going with that and where we are going, so to speak. Learn that.
Have you been, are you familiar at all with the level of beta that we do have?
Not really. I know I talked to some of the Westfield D P W. I got some information from them about how they do it. It's just, it's been a long time since they did it too, but I really wanted to see how they put, put everything together. Whether it's just color coded, you know, red is bad, blue is good. I just wanted to see how that is and see where their information is.
That'll be.
Compared to how we were using it.
Ours is a spreadsheet.
Yeah. That's what I've heard and I haven't even been able to look at that yet, just from the fact that when he left, the one.
It was old, old and.
That's what I've heard, it was seventeen.
Once he gets the report, he'll come and give a presentation here.
Okay.
Which you guys will be.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. That's why I love to see that and really be able to, if it's any interactive to it, to really see what they think, why they do it that way, what, you know, which roads or why they say it was like that, not just, oh, it's Powell.
Yeah.
So those are, so that'll be interesting, that'll be fun.
That'll be a good first focus.
Good budgets.
Yeah, that's.
I've always, I've always been.
Time to have it, right?
Yeah, the budget's always been, where do you think we're going? But I never really had to crunch the numbers. So now it'd be fun to actually try to crunch in the numbers and really understanding how and why and all that, so.
And you'll be able to look back on history.
Exactly. Seeing last years and previous years and where everything was allocated and whatnot and knowing where we can move things and stuff like that, so.
Cool.
Anything else? Anything else you wanna add?
Well, I will want, I'm very grateful. Thank you guys for uh, look, looking at me, taking the time. Um, can't wait to do it. Um, and I'm very appreciative of everything that town has given me too, so can't wait to keep going.
Okay.
Good. I'd make a motion to appoint Richard, it's hard time saying Richard. Richard Bozak as the D P W Director pending all the yada yadas that we have to do for them.
That's me.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Russ Anderson, yes.
Thanks guys very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Are you just here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Then we would like to invite Joseph Meswar up or.
Got the name right.
We've been practicing. You have been at those in our.
Yes, yes, you do. And that's not my fault.
Yeah, this is for the building inspector. Um, and like Rich, you wanna just give us a little quick background and?
My name's Joe Meswar. I've been a building inspector for about ten years now. I, before that, I traveled on the road, running jobs all around the country, so that got old when my granddaughter was born, so.
What type of job?
Uh, like commercial, like McDonald's, Harley Davidson's.
Arby's.
What's that?
It's on Arby's.
Arby's, well, Perkins Restaurants, no Arby's, but.
I forgot about those.
Perkins? Still have them P A.
And down south, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it was. Yeah. Well.
Well, I started out in Holyoke as a building inspector, which gave me a really quick, quick learning curve.
Sure.
Um, quick story, the first day I was there, I got a, I got a call that a building was falling down. I ran to the commissioner, this is, you know, the, the wall's falling down. You see, take the camera, go take some pictures, but we knew it was coming. It was, it was already ported off and stuff, but I'm free, I'm like, this is just a normal day thing.
This is what I'm in for.
You hope you won't have that problem.
And I'm still here.
You seem to have a well-rounded background in trades.
Yeah.
Um, between commercial and residential, large and small. Um, Holyoke is a little bit larger than Southwick. What draws you to Southwick?
But I think the opportunity to to move up into the commissioner's position was really what what got me. And it's a small town. I actually grew up here, so kinda full circle.
Okay.
I kinda like to stay until, as long as you'll have me.
So um, just explain how that works for the commissioner certification and where you're at.
So there's, there's three tests. I've gotten one of them already done, so I got two more tests to take for um, like legal aspects, you know, and budgeting.
Yeah.
Is the biggest part. And then the other one is for managing.
And that's within a certain timeframe?
Uh, it's either a year or eighteen months. I, I believe it's eighteen months, but a year.
You're in a good spot then.
Should be more, more than enough.
Any experience with with zoning enforcement?
Yep, and that's, um, that's usually the toughest part. Um, that, that was actually what I was hired for originally in Holyoke on a block grant for the blatant all that and dealing with going down with the police, with cars and uh, health department. We, we go a lot together for, you know, joint inspections for buildings with, you know, tenant problems and or housing problems and building problems, so. Lot of, lot of letter writing, which, well, and just you gotta, you know, the way, the way it was taught to me was treat, treat every case as it's going to court, all the way through, and that way you don't have to back backtrack if it has to, you know. Most of the time they don't have to, but you have to plan for it. So it's a shame, but but most times, you know, I try to get compliance through, you know, working with the people as, as best I can. But it doesn't always work, so.
How did you work um, with other agencies like, Southwick's had a history of fire and building working together and a lurch of licenses?
Yeah, I, I've, I've heard that fire departments don't always work with the building department. I've, you know, in, you know, I'm in Westfield now. We get along great. Holyoke, we get along great. Um, it, we do all our joint inspections and, you know, it just helps having an extra set of eyes there.
Yeah.
I'd rather work with people than against them, for sure. It's, that's same with contractors and homeowners. I'd rather get them to come along, you know, and just move on, get, get their jobs done.
Are you familiar with any permitting software?
I, I was a little, Westfield doesn't have it, um, but I, I did, I did some in Holyoke. We were, we were starting it, so. If I am familiar with it, it'll, it'll take me a little to to get up to speed, but well, computers are the bane of my existence. I know you guys like them.
Yeah.
I know.
You don't have to like it, but you gotta.
Yeah, we gotta use them, yeah. No, I understand.
But you're.
I'm on, I'm on them every day.
Okay, okay. Not afraid of that?
No, no.
Okay.
Neither.
Okay, me neither. Okay. Bye.
So are you looking for a motion to appoint Joseph Meswar?
Yes, yeah, got it right.
As the building and, building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer for the Town of Southwick, subject to all of Nadine's and everyone else's yada yadas.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes.
Ross Anderson, yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Well, thank you.
On the way out.
Just got a couple of inspectors here, yada yadas.
Yeah. Windows upstairs.
So he's gonna come in and uh, get sworn in tomorrow so that he can do some work, Karen. One second. That'll be nice.
Yes.
Just as a, just at the basis until he starts on November, starts on November tenth. But Mr. Zilbim is. Uh, we don't have anybody.
I wouldn't have very problem.
So you've been helping?
No. Yes. We're good? Okay, sorry for that delay, folks. Uh, let's see. So we are going to discuss and vote on a memorandum of agreement with the Southwick Firefighters Association. And the Southwick Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, Local forty nine one nine, AFL C I O. Um, let me read that whole thing?
No.
Just gonna, so the short story is to receive case of information electronically. Um, with hard copies available as needed upon request.
This is part of the streamlining process that Munis is able to do. We'd like to see everybody get them digitally instead of printing them out every week. Um, and so, but we've gotta, we've gotta bargain it. So this is the only union that has agreed to it.
So, and it has been tested and run through and it's all running smoothly. So we would have to both to sign up to agree to the agreement.
Yes.
Make a motion for the chair to sign.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Uh, discussion down soon. Very sudden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So has there been pushback from other bargaining unit?
They wanna, they have to bargain it. And they're just upset that, so we just give them paper. Okay, most of the million people that agree to it, it's just so much easier, right? We need all the more paper.
Bet you have a paper trail, because you never keep your stubs.
Mine's in my drawer, it's filling up.
I used to keep the blank panel as notepad. There's always one blank panel. It's write note paper. All right, what's up?
Yep, thank you.
Southwick Clerical Union Holiday Hours, normally scheduled half day before Christmas and half day before New Year's. Uh, request is to combine for one full day to be taken Friday, December twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five, which would mean that Town Hall will be closed on that Friday, ten twenty six, uh, twelve twenty six. Discussion concerned?
Uh, pretty customer, done it every year. Do you need a motion to approve that?
I believe we do.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Discuss and vote on a reserve fund transfer request from the Finance Committee dated October second, two thousand and twenty five. This is a request for thirty two thousand, five hundred, eighteen dollars and sixty one cents to replace the current six hour P three twenty pistols and bolsters that are reportedly having safety issues.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Discuss and vote on a parade application. Southwick Civic Farm, Farm Day Parade planned for November first, two thousand and twenty five. From, that is two to four P M, correct on that?
Well.
Looks like two to three.
Two to three P M. And there is an application here in your packet. Um. I did note police detail was left blank. We do have police detail, correct? On this.
You're fine.
Uh. So that should be filled in, I suppose. Kind of an important part of the application. And.
The embrace of traditional big world north replacement.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, discussion after. I'll make a motion to approve the permit.
Um, do we wanna have that completed? You tell me, did yes or no?
With the commentary that we got from the chief, I have sufficient information.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call vote, Diane Gale, aye?
Doug Mogul, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Yes, further comment?
Yeah, it was just, um, I was looking through some bylaws this weekend, like I had nothing else to do. And we actually have a local bylaw on parades and permits. And I think we should put that on our pit parade of either sending it back to town meeting to repeal it or amend it, because it's ambiguous at best. Um, especially as it relates to um, the state highway that runs through the, through the town. So people have, may have to get a state permit for something and then they have to get a potentially redundant permit for for a town function, and it also has other words in it that could be easily misconstrued by someone. Um, if they wanted to, like the word procession. So if someone is going from the funeral home to their final resting place, uh, that is a procession by definition, but in our bylaw, you need a parade, parade slash procession permit for it. We never do that.
Or a pageant.
Yeah, or a pageant, you know, and I know in, in years past, there's been some coordination with the schools on something that is eloquently called the drive around, because that's not in the bylaw, right? And you could easily see how, I think we should just put that in there as one of the things to clean, just clean up at a, at a future town meeting, either an annual or a special, just to clean that up. Because we would never require someone to have a, probably a full on permit for a procession for, say, a funeral or something like that. And then, and then also resolve that this, and we can have a discussion here at a future date about, you know, if someone's on the state highway, they, they need a state permit already. Do we, is it redundant to have another permit from the town?
And I don't really think so, just because we should know, the town should know what's happening, like not find out whatever through Facebook or something. You know, especially if we're using our resources or, I mean, just like, we're gonna have a parade, we're gonna shut, shut this state highway down, but the town didn't know. But we weren't able to even put any word out, just, just thinking way out of the box. Obviously, it's a small enough town that we're all gonna know what's going on, but just, I think for process, just for, so the town knows. Um, you know, the happenings, I think it's a good idea to, I don't know.
Good idea to get you with. It could be like, you know.
A policy or one of those, a bit of permit things or something.
A mass general law from seventeen ninety that's still on the.
This is our local bylaw. Yeah, I know, and who knows why? I don't know how it came about.
Nineteen seventy five.
Okay, so I'm in the clear on that one, so.
This one, this one was seventy five?
Yeah. Fifty.
Maybe it was for the class of seventy five's graduation.
Probably was. It probably was.
Okay.
The greatest.
Good point, alright. Um, then we are on master plan implementation, many updates. Um. I just wanna review the items that I had given to you before. I hope you read through the strategies that were linked to the recommended actions and that it gave it a little more context. Um. Russ, your comments, uh, when I sent that out. Um. I guess I will write up, so, so that process we talked about of recommending changes or alterations of some sort. I'll take what you provided. I'll try to draft those. And we can come to the next meeting and discuss that review those and make sure that's what everybody's thoughts are.
That's good.
Um, and we can submit those for changes or alterations. Um, Doug, did you have any other, I see your laptop came in.
Yeah, finally.
Um, did you have any other suggested, let's call them alterations in your review?
I'd rather submit them in writing back to you, because they're lengthy.
Okay, if you can do that, and I will try to put those on the modification, change, delete, whatever they are. And I'll try to get that done for the next meeting as well. Um, and I just wanna mention that the Implementation Committee was also charged with semi-annual reports to the Planning Board and Select Boards. And that first reporting is tentatively December eighth. Uh, depending on the Planning Board's availability, that'll be our meeting on December eighth. And that's where these alterations and suggestions are gonna be part of that reporting. And the progress report will be updated again to be published in the Annual Town Report. So I think it's kind of important that we, as a select board, respond. So I wanna review again, next time, your suggested modifications and the submission of, if we can agree that certain ones are complete, let's submit that and do our part on that call anyway, for next meeting. Um. Anything else to add on that topic?
Not for me.
Then other new business, we're on other new business, right? Is that where we are? Um. There, there's an electric, electricity aggregation meeting downstairs, probably still going on. There was one held in Senior Center this morning. It is the same presentation that they're doing right now. Uh, it was a good, it was a fast presentation, but very thorough. And um, went over the, basically the ease of opting in and out. And I mean, you could play it like the stock market, if today the rate's better, you can opt in today and it's effective the next billing cycle. Uh, you can opt back in every time that rate changes in your favor again. Um, there were plenty of great questions from the attendees. And um, I mentioned there, a lot of them were for people with solar. We have quite a few people with solar and you know, wondering how they make those decisions. Um, and the Colonial Power people are, you know, ready at hand to take individual calls. Show me your situation, we'll show you where, where it, where it affects, how it affects you and, and does it work for you or not. So it was a pretty good presentation, a lot of good questions. I just wanna mention tomorrow is National First Responders Day. And we have two of them here in the audience. Um, I personally like to thank all of them from dispatch to police, fire, E M T, paramedics. Um, and not to forget their administrative teams that keep them organized, all part of that team. Um. And I think my partners here would probably agree to the value of the training that we put into uh, the first responders, when, when those seconds count, that's been proven recently and the great value, great dividends paid from that. Um, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we mentioned Saturday is the annual farm parade, starting at Interstate down to Town Hall. There will be free hot dogs, also thanks to the first responders. Uh, that'll be on the town green at the Congregational Church. Um, do you wanna talk about the ever source meter eating, John?
So, um, everybody's getting smart meters and they will be starting to be installed in November, so at your request. Everybody's getting smart meters and they will be starting to be installed in November, so at your request. To have them come do a presentation, their earliest availability is Tuesday, November fourth, so they're coming here six P M in the auditorium. To do a presentation on the smart meters. And I do.
When are they starting the installation of said smart meters?
Sometimes in November. I have a feeling that meeting, um. Won't be as friendly as today's meetings. Uh, that's it for me, I'm sorry, I don't, did you have anything else? I was gonna mention it a few more. Uh, that's it for me for other news.
Well, let me first. I'm a little disappointed that EverSource. Is, is managing to stall that out, that meeting until af, potentially after they've started going around installing the smart meters. And, um, you know, I, I think that. That's, that's a bad look for EverSource, there are redeeming qualities to the smart meters. I mean, if you, if you read up on what they do and have what they're doing with them. You know, it, it, they're, they're not horrible. There is some, there's been some legitimate discussion around. You know, some of the, the radio frequency and some other stuff, and, and the other capabilities that's given to the power company and the information. That they can collect and, and potentially utilize from those, so worthy of a, of a public discussion before they go. You know, touching people's homes and, and, and replacing those meters, so, you know. Frankly, I'm disappointed in, in EverSource. They continue to reach rock bottom and continue to dig. You know, as far as it, it would cost them nothing and take very little effort to come out here and have a. Have had a session a month ago on these things, when they started sending these emails out, right, and. You know, I had multiple people reach out to me and say, what do you know about these? I go, I know very little. So we should ask EverSource to come and explain what they're doing. They're spending millions and millions of dollars to replace these meters. There has to be a, a benefit to them and the user as to why they're doing it. They should be in front of the public in the towns that they're putting these meters, explaining what they're doing. And why they're such a great idea. The fact that they're gonna wait until after, potentially some of them are already installed. Or their, and there's a significant financial penalty to people who opt out of those, unlike this smart metering. Project with Colonial, Colonial Power, right, with Colonial Power. If you opt in or opt out, you, it doesn't really change anything from other than, you know, the name, uh, name on your bill. This, if you opt, decide to opt out of the meter project, they're gonna increase your bill significantly per month. To continue the use of your old meter, and I understand that they may feel that there's a cost of, to providing the meter reading service that we have today. But they're not discounting your electricity or the delivery, that now that they have this smart meter capability, that they can read them remotely and all this other stuff. I, I really wish they would have been, and, you know, maybe I'm perpetuating some fud here, but. It would have been way better for them to get out in front of that and, and come in front of the people of this town, even if they did it on channel fifteen, they didn't have to come here to do it. So I'll get off my soapbox on that, I'm disappointed.
Could, I mean, I, I, I saw it as a second wave of. Southwick and other towns. Could we ask them to delay Southwick until after they've given their presentation?
Certainly ask them, I mean, if we think about it, it'd be the second day into November, so I don't think it would be a problem for them not to come on the third.
It's just a bad look, right, I just, if you, if they. Yeah, that'd be great, I, I think we should ask them.
Come out here, because they're not doing it another time.
They, they are having these community meetings in other towns, but you'd think, I just saw they just. Okay, but you'd think they'd have volunteered to do it.
If it's such a great idea, come out and sell it.
So it's a complaint that they didn't do it voluntarily.
And their letters weren't that far away from November to tell you they're coming.
No, and it, and it, I just got one last week that says, you know, we'll be in your neighborhood soon to replace your smart meter.
I, I'm just curious that if I opted out, they don't come and read my meter now anyway. They haven't been out to read mine since twenty, I don't know, sixteen. So I already have. The, their remote reader, so.
Would they do it by drive-by? Or they don't even come by now?
Because they have sold their net metering, I think. Don't even do it. And there's no mention of that in their letter, but. Anything else you're disappointed in?
Well, Comcast is always high up on that list, they made a mess of the town in the last couple of weeks too, but. Um, we don't expect as much from them. I just want to thank the Historical Society, they had a fantastic walk with spirits, I don't know how Pat Odeorn manages to pull off. The perfect fall day every year, the spirit walk, and this year was no disappointment as well, was very well attended. And, you know, kudos to the crew, crew of, you know, Gene Thoreau and all those guys that have spent countless hours. In the cemetery restoring some of those old headstones, um, to be like new. Um, there's a ton of history in that cemetery, literally. And you learn a lot. Uh, about the history of the town of Southwick, uh, and the surrounding area by coming to events like that or studying up on some of that stuff, so. Um, I want to thank them for having me, but also thanks to everyone else who came out to learn a little bit more about the history of the town of Southwick. And, uh, also a huge congratulations to Park and Rec and Lisa Bailey for helping to organize the, I think it's the third or fourth or. Fifth trunk or treat, it was, it was a COVID era thing, so it's probably the fifth, seven? Really, great. Also incredible attendance, again, nice weather. Um, doing it with the spirit walk almost guarantees nice weather, it was great to see the police department there, the fire department, a couple other groups, the library was there. Um, and all the folks that came out and had, um. You know, set up their trunker, trunk or treat, and, and all the kids and families that came out, it was just a, a very well attended, very well organized event. So kudos to them.
The library gave out books, she said she ran out quickly, that was great.
I, I know one employer last year, one company from town that was there last year had to borrow candy and. To, to make up for a shortfall, so. They were oversupplied this year, but you don't know what to expect, and the, that year, and it was just, uh. The turnout, it's just non-stop for a couple, three hours, so it's great. Great to see events like that. And that's it for me today.
Uh, under old business, anyone have anything they want to update on goals and objectives? I have none. Anything else, other old business? Minutes acknowledged and approved, executive session minutes from October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Who's up the other?
Explanations required, Kenny.
Can't be in two places at the same time.
Motion approved the executive session minutes of October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Call vote dangal, I.
Doug Morgan, yes.
And we're going to acknowledge payroll warrant number two-six-one-one dated October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-three thousand. Two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and maybe seven cents. And then we need a motion to go into executive session, to, to mass general law, chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public body in the chair, so declares, and we will not convene in an open session.
Well, before we make a roll, I do want to make one, it's an old business topic, not a big deal, it's not controversial. Um, I want to once again congratulate the three officers. Um, that we had a, a part of the award ceremony here a couple of weeks ago, those three gentlemen were recognized with statewide award. Um, at the Mass Police Association, was that their annual? Annual convention on the Cape, uh, last Thursday afternoon. They were in. Elite company with some of the stuff that was awarded, so again, kudos to. Uh, Officer Fiss, Officer Boschman and. Officer Olsen, so. Well done. So move, or yes?
Second, yes, so moved.